A regular meeting to order, it's 9:30. We'll get ourselves going. Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Does any member have a need to declare a conflict of interest this morning? Seeing none, I'll turn to Mr. Cribbs for rise and report motions of the in-camera session, if any.
Warden, there's nothing to report at this time. It is, however, my pleasure to inform County Council that staff in the Information Technology Department has created a new recorded voting app. And I'd strongly encourage members of council to call for a recorded vote when you bring your motion to invite a delegate across the bar so that you can see how it works and what it looks like on a rather innocuous vote.
Yay. Okay, the wonders of technology. All right, we'll try it out as I look for a motion from council to permit the speaker beyond the bar. Moved by Counsel Case, seconded by Counsel McGugan.
That's a recorded vote.
And that's a recorded vote.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, we're going to engage the reporter.
Okay.
We have, and it's beginning with Deputy Warden.
Deputy Warden Bean.
Yes.
Counsel Weaver.
Yes.
Counsel Arnold.
No.
Uh-oh.
Counsel Bushy.
Yes.
Counsel Bradley.
Yes.
Counsel Broad.
Yes.
Counsel Brusowicz.
Yes.
Counsel Case.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Gilliland.
Yes.
Counsel Gillis.
Yes.
Counsel Hand.
Yes.
Warden McDougall.
Yes.
Counsel Marriott.
I guess.
Counsel McCharles.
I'd be glad.
Okay. Counsel McGugan.
I don't want to see Counsel Arnold by himself.
Very good. And Counsel Napper.
Absent.
Absent, all right. We'll tally those votes. And that passes by 30 to 4.
All right, understanding our sole presenter this morning, Ms. Nancy Vedler, who many of us have had the pleasure of hearing speak previously, is here this morning, and I know you won't feel bad about our playing around with the vote, but you're here this morning to talk about the Lampton Shores Fragmites Community Group in their wish to address County Council regarding invasive plant species and highlight some of the accomplishments with a request at the end of her presentation. So as she gets set up, we'll let her roll when she's ready. Thank you.
you this morning about our concerns regarding invasive Fragmites Australis. And what I'm going to do is start off with a photo that was taken at Lampton Centre United Church Camp just southwest of Kettle Point. The reason I'm starting with this is because most of us are familiar with what Fragmites looks like along the road sides, but not all of us have had an opportunity to see the negative impact that it is having along our shorelines and in our special areas. The campers at Lampton Centre, the recreational area on the beach was totally destroyed by the Fragmites, and the camp administrators ended up putting in a swimming pool. So, in 2005, it was identified by Agriculture and Agri-Food Canada as Canada's worst invasive plant. Why should we be concerned? We should be concerned because of the economic impact, tourism, recreation, property values, agriculture, flooding. We should be concerned about the environmental impact. Areas of natural and scientific interest are at risk. We're losing habitat, we're losing biodiversity, it's negatively impacting on wildlife and species at risk. We should also be concerned because of the safety hazards, fire and roadside safety. And I've given a package to you, and in it there are some statistics from the States, unfortunately, regarding, we don't have any in Canada, regarding fire. We should be concerned because of the huge cost if we continue to ignore it, and also because we continue to contribute to the spread along the lake here on shoreline and the other Great Lake shorelines and across the province. So, the Lampton Shores Fragmites Community Group came together seven years ago, where a group of volunteers were committed to working with other organizations and private landowners to restore wetland habitats and beaches and control invasive Fragmites. We have, over the past seven years, accomplished a number of things. I'm just going to highlight a few. We have initiated work in over 300 acres of our shoreline. We have initiated education programs. We have given community information sessions. We've provided training opportunities for frontline staff. We have travelled the province in doing presentations and educating the general public. And most recently, we participated in the Great Lakes-St. Lawrence Cities Initiative in Niagara Falls, New York. We also have created many educational materials, brochures. In fact, Rob Stanga and myself sat on a committee, under the Ontario Fragmites Working Group, and created a smart practices document for treating road sides in Ontario. We've also created a fact sheet for agriculture. So, we have initiated in our municipality a management plan and continue to work with a wetland ecologist. We are the first municipality in the province to work with the county, with Lampton County, in overcoming jurisdictional issues and treating the road sides. We also approached the county when we saw the construction that was taking place associated with the wind turbines, heavy equipment going through standing Fragmites and into farmers' fields and tracking it up the side of the roads. And as a result of this, Fragmites is now considered an important addition to future land use agreements. We have the endorsement of the Ontario Federation of Agriculture. We've established many successful partnerships. We have approached this as a landscape. We're probably the first in Ontario to approach Fragmites management as a landscape and as a watershed. And we have received over $400,000 in grant funds. So, our observation is that there is a lot of interest right now, from the number of telephone calls and the number of emails that I receive, and from the media attention that has been given recently. There's great interest from property owners, municipalities, cities, and other stakeholders, but there's no coordination. This coordinated approach is what is recommended by the Ontario Fragmites Working Group and the Great Lakes Fragmites Collaborative. The Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry and the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change are unable to respond, and we can't afford to wait for something that's probably not going to happen. And early detection and rapid response is critical. That's what everyone is saying, you have to get on top of these invasives right away, and yet the wheels are moving so slowly and the plant continues to spread. So, for your consideration, this has taken on a life of its own. The breadth and scope of this endeavor has grown beyond the capacity of a group like the Lampton Shores Fragmites Community Group. The effort and resources necessary to effectively manage Frag in our county needs to reside in a stable and resilient governance structure that can promote and coordinate the various volunteer, private, municipal, and provincial efforts towards a long-term vision. We ask the county's assistance in recognizing that Fragmites is a problem, taking the lead, and bringing the stakeholders together. Become the first county in Ontario to tackle Fragmites as a county, as a number of watersheds take a landscape approach. Work with municipalities, conservation authorities, Nature Conservancy Canada, ministries, Ducks Unlimited, Lampton Wildlife, and other organizations. Determine who would be the best custodian of this program and promote hiring a Fragmites coordinator. That person would work in creating a plan, a model that is collaborative and resilient, and it would also be a model that can be used in the future, because there are going to be more situations that come up regarding invasive plants. So we need a paradigm shift. We need to shift our thinking. We need to think how we can do this and not throw up the obstacles, the reasons why not, and we can't afford to wait. So I want to thank you for the time that you've given, and I also want to thank county staff, Jason and Rob Stanga and Peter Corbett. We have been very fortunate to have your support, your interest, and the proactive approach that you've taken in treating the road sides. And I like to leave on an, or end on an optimistic note. This little dwarf lake iris emerged this spring, two years ago. This was 150 acres of solid Fragmites. There were no native plants. And in the spring, this little guy emerged. So, there's my note of hope for the future, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vedler. Remember that slide from Great Lakes Cities Initiative. Counsel, do you have any questions for the presenter this morning before she leaves? Counsel Gillis and Counsel Napper?
Not a question, because I know how, what's the word I'm looking for? What a champion, what a crusader you are for this particular issue. And you've been recognized by so many groups, and actually, I have called on your expertise as well. This particular invasive species apparently has been in the province for 150 years, but many people have thought of it as something not invasive. But we see how it's just taking over our wetlands. A few years ago, it was loosestrife, now it's Fragmites. I don't know what happened to loosestrife, perhaps it got overwhelmed by Fragmites. But nevertheless, it certainly is something that we can't ignore, and I really appreciate the fact that your group has done as much as it has on shoestring budgets. I'm amazed how you've brought various community groups together to form what you have. And if you can do it, surely to goodness we can do it. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Can I just add that, so with the purple loosestrife? It is controlled by a beetle. It's called a Galarachella beetle, and we released it in Port Franks in about 2002, and it was part of a provincial initiative. We haven't reached that point yet with Fragmites. They apparently have identified two moths, but they are still, they're a long way off from being able to release those. Okay? Thank you.
Next, Counsel Napper, then Brusowitz, and I think I saw another hand, McGugan after that. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for a great presentation. I just had some questions on my own here. You only had $15,000 funding to create all what you've done here?
Pardon me?
Your funding was only $15,000, I think I was told.
We have $15,000 in our bank account right now. That was a donation from Next Era. We have raised over $400,000, sorry, in partnership. Most recently, we received $200,000 from the National Wetland Conservation Fund just a couple of months ago. That is to be used over three years to work in coastal meadow marsh that's just southwest of Kettle and Stony Point. So Kettle and Stony Point have received some funding from that as well, and we're working with them.
Information there, from somebody.
That's okay.
And our municipality, I'm wondering, our municipality budgets $15,000 a year, about $15,000 for roadside control and their properties.
Go ahead, Counsel Napper.
Follow-up to, through you, to Jason Cole. What is the county's budget for Fragmites control per year?
Through the warden, our current budget is $70,000 a year for roadside Fragmites control, and that doesn't include our regular weed spraying program. It does not include that.
Counsel Brusowitz.
Thank you, Madam Vedler, for impressive amount of work, and I truly appreciate what you've done for all of us. Question from the inquiry in mind. We have to respect Fragmites for what they are, very strong, invasive, of course, but the question I have is, is there some potential benefit turning the adversity into opportunity of commercializing harvesting of Fragmites? Have you ever looked into that aspect?
There is. About a month or so ago, we had a fellow come down to our Wood Drive project area from Omafra, and he was looking at it for biofuel. The challenge is that we don't want to harvest it. We'd like to get rid, we'd like to get rid of it, because harvesting it is just going to promote the spread of it. I know that in Europe, they do, they manage their land more than we do. Everything is managed. But in Ontario, where we have so many special lakes, and I just, we just need to get it under control. We need to manage it and get it under control. I don't know if that answers your question.
Counsel McGugan.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of County Council, thank you ever so much for that very interesting presentation. Fragmites, for those of us in the rural areas with ditches, and it's a real challenge. I had none in my ditch last year. This year I have 100 feet. Next year I expect it will be 300. I'm not supposed to say this, but I'm trying to think of a way I can do, get rid of it in the next week or two. It will not likely be legal under the MOE, but it may just disappear. The other thing is, I don't know how many of you watch TV Ontario. This whole week is dedicated to the Great Lakes, the health of it, and there's a Joint Chiefs of Commissioners meeting in Toronto this week. And last night, at 9 o'clock for one hour, they had a whole presentation on Long Point, Turkey Point, about the Fragmites, and I believe they're going to do it all week from 8 till 10 o'clock. I found it really interesting. So I may have you come and talk to my local council, because we need to do something. We do not spray any weeds in our municipality other than what the county sprays on the county roads. Now, Madam Warden, I don't know if I have this right or not, but you had an excellent suggestion that somehow we find a champion, and I guess I would like to take it one step further, and I'm not sure if this is correct. If I could make a motion that may be through the warden to Jason, that perhaps you could come back with a recommendation in the near future as to how we can move forward, because it's obvious that the government is all bogged down with electrical rates, so they're not really worried about our Fragmites. So I'll make that as a motion, and if I'm out of order, please tell me.
Mr. Cole, do you have anything you'd like to add to that at this time, or would you just like to wait and?
About both of us.
All right. Counsel Gillis, question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Dovetailing on to what Counsel McGugan has said, we spoke about this at our council meeting on Monday night, and I have been in discussion with the Minister of Natural Resources with regard to this particular issue. And we are under the understanding that there's going to be something coming down within the next year. However, it would be good to preempt that, have something that we can champion and carry forward, and take advantage of whatever comes along our way, be the first ones to the door instead of the last ones out of the gate. So I heartily support what Counsel McGugan is saying, and looking at what Ms. Vedler has done as an example of how she's brought everything, all these different organizations together to make this happen, and over so many jurisdictions, clearly we can do that as well. So this is the way to go.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Counsel Weaver.
Thanks, Warden. Nancy, we certainly in Lampton Shores are proud of all the work that you have done and support that. I totally agree with the motion. I think there needs to be a report. I think we need to look at how we can take the lead and bring the stakeholders together and be, as the county, the champion for this. And I'm not sure what the motion is complete with, but I think we need a report, we need to look, how can we be the coordinator? And through our budget process, what would, if we had, as was needed there, a county coordinator, a Fragmites coordinator? This is bigger than Lampton Shores, it's bigger than Lampton County. It's provincial, and if we can champion that with this group at the province and get some action taken. There's also the issue of the type of sprays that need to be regulated, all of those things, but it takes a bigger body and a bigger voice. It can't be bigger than what Nancy makes to all of the presentations and how the group has done, but I guess I support the motion, but I'd like to see it further with a report and how it will affect our budget and what we can do to move this forward.
Is that okay? Was that the intention of the mover, was to, I think that was your intention, that Mr. Cole come back? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Counsel Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just want to make sure that it's not just the lake here on shoreline. St. Clair River has the same issues we've been dealing with it for a decade now, and in the Conservation Authority as well. We've done a number of projects with quite a lot of success as well throughout the region, but when we're doing the report, I think, want to make sure that it's just not limited to the lake here on shoreline. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else? Seeing nothing else, all in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? Seeing no one? Thank you very much, and thank you for all your work and advocacy for this area and Ontario, Nancy, it's commendable. Okay, next is item number 8A. We have minutes of County Council, open and closed session dated September 7, 2016. Looking for direction. Counsel McCharles, moved, seconded by Counsel Brusowitz. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, that motion is carried. Okay, next, council, we have under 9A, we have items A to D. How would council like to deal with these items of correspondence? Deputy Warden Bean. Thank you. Is there a seconder? Counsel Gillis? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much, council. Next, under 10A, we have an information report from Mr. Millay, General Manager of the Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership regarding changes to composition and appointments to the Board of Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership. Looking for council's direction here. Motion on the report? Okay. Moved by Counsel Cook, seconded by Counsel Case. Discussion? Counsel Gillis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to know if we could get a firmer direction on some of the timelines. This particular report said was going to the next meeting of SLEP, as I understand it. So I'd like to know when that next meeting is going to be, where this is going to be discussed and finally approved. It looks like Mr. Van Horn might have some insight on that.
Mr. Van Horn, could you?
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. I believe it's set out in the body of the report from Mr. Millay towards the end, that there would be a special meeting of the board within the next month.
Are there any other questions? Counsel Bradley.
Point of clarification, based on the discussion at the SLEP board, before new additions from the four different regions, does that include or exclude elected people in those four regions? It wasn't clear in the motion that was passed and it was raised to the board meeting. So I asked for clarification. Are elected people eligible to be appointed from those four regions, or is it simply supposed to be citizen appointments? I think it's really important for the striking committee gets into this issue.
Mr. Van Horn, can you respond to the discussions you've had as the nominations committee?
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. My understanding of the literal wording of the motion and as well the intent of the mover and seconder is there's no restriction on who can be appointed from the four regions to the board. I think the intention was to respect the desire to have business people on it, but that's not strictly speaking what the motion says. They can appoint business people, they could appoint potentially politicians. There were no restrictions on it. So as it currently reads, it's open, but I believe the intention of the mover and seconder was to try to frame it and, or to try to ensure that there were business people put on the board.
Follow-up, Counsel Bradley.
Because it's not really there, that I would move that those appointments be citizen appointments and not elected appointments.
Making a motion?
Yes, just to make sure it's clear then.
Okay. Is there a seconder for that? Counsel McGugan. Counsel Case.
I wasn't going to wade into this, Madam Warden, but Mr. Van Horn was correct. It was not to exclude elected people. The intent was to get business people involved. That was always my intent, but at the same time was not to exclude some of the mayors. Again, I look at it from the standpoint, the mayor of Sarnia has a seat on that board, and the warden does, and I don't think that we should judge and eliminate anybody else politically that may have an interest or may have some experience. You may find that there's a person sits in this chamber that has a lot of business experience. So again, I didn't want to exclude. At the same time, I think the intent always was, from my standpoint, was to get the best qualified businessperson from one's area to sit on that board and represent that area in a very, very high way. So that was my intent. So anyways, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Case. Anyone else? Okay, there's a motion on the floor. We'll have that read back, I guess, for clarity.
I'd have it moved by Counsel Bradley, seconded by Counsel McGugan, that elected officials be excluded from the four corners, four quadrant, direct representation.
Counsel Case.
Recorded vote, please, Madam Warden.
We'll activate the randomizer then.
Mr. Van Clinken's hitting the randomizer. Oh, and it's chosen Counsel Cook.
No.
Counsel Gilliland.
No.
Counsel Gillis.
No.
Counsel Hand.
No.
Warden McDougall.
No.
Counsel Marriott.
No.
Counsel McCharles.
No.
Counsel McGugan.
Yes.
Counsel Napper.
No.
Deputy Warden Bean.
No.
Counsel Weaver.
No.
Counsel Arnold.
No.
Counsel Bushy.
No.
Counsel Bradley.
Counsel.
Counsel Broad.
No.
Counsel Brusowicz.
No.
And Counsel Case.
No.
That's defeated 4 to 33.
You did have a motion to receive and file from Cook and Case.
Okay, so we have a motion to receive the report from Mr. Millay, and it was duly seconded. All in favor then of the report? Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much, council. The next items before us are... The next items before us are in Section A, they're items not requiring a motion. However, there is items A, B, and C, which are minutes from three separate organizations. Council, how would you like to deal with this as a group or separately? I'll look for a motion. Counsel Weaver?
I would move that they all be received for information.
Any discussion? Yes, Counsel Broad?
Thanks, Madam Warden. Question on the Woodlands one. We've had at least two, maybe three times now, it's been asked where that money goes to, and no one has yet to give us a response of what we're doing with that money. There was some discussion here, I believe last time, some unclarified information that no one really seemed to know. Where is that money going to?
Mr. Krebs, would you like to speak to it?
There are multiple answers, if I may do, Counsel Broad. There will be a report forthcoming, one has been requested, and that is coming. Generally speaking, though, we have reported in previous years on this, and the money is transferred to the Conservation Authority, and the Conservation Authority oversees planting with, throughout Lampton County, with the best geographic dispersion it can manage. That's the short answer. That said, we can, we will account more specifically to you than that in the future.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion to receive the reports? Opposed? A motion is carried. Okay, next we'll go to our committee minutes. Item 12A, committee AM minutes, I'll look to Chair Counsel Weaver to present.
Thank you, Warden. The AM committee met on September 21st, and I present these minutes for council's consideration.
Number one? Two? Counselor Arnold?
Warden McDougall, just a note, there was, I brought information in regards to the Kimball Road speed limit, that as well, there's some signage there around schoolchildren that was, will be asked for in that note too, I just didn't want to lose that in this, because I think I reported that as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So signage for schoolchildren? Okay. Okay, that's noted. Item three? Four? Five? Six? Seven? Eight? And nine, it's dealt with in camera? Yes. Counsel Arnold?
Thank you, Warden McDougall, just to go back to number seven. I spoke about the Lampton Heritage Museum, and those comments came from me in regards to their volunteer appreciation lunch that I attended, so I just want to make sure that it's written in there. It wasn't just something that came out of helter-skelter, it was in regards to that.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Arnold. Ten? And eleven? Chair Weaver?
Madam Warden, I would move that these minutes be adopted as presented.
Counsel Marriott? All in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. Okay. Next we'll go to the afternoon committee minutes dated September 21st, looking to its chair, Counsel McCharles, to present.
Thank you, Warden McDougall, members of county council. The afternoon committee met on September 21st, and because the county operation is such a well-oiled machine, we only had to meet for 20 minutes, and I present the minutes for your consideration.
Three? Four? Five? Six? Counsel McCharles?
Madam Warden, I move the adoption of this day's minutes.
All in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right, we have no motion, or items tabled from previous meeting, no notice of motion. Counsel Case?
Are you at other business, Madam Warden?
No, I haven't moved there yet.
I'm sorry, I jumped the gun.
Okay, that's all right. Okay. All right, see no notice of motion, or motion's coming forward. Item 15, I recognize Counsel Arnold and then Counsel Case, that approached me earlier, and then Counsel Gillis. Thank you very much. Counsel Ar-
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just some information I'm looking for in regards to an article that was on the radio this morning, regards to transportation of liquid nuclear waste. I was wondering if we could invite whoever is responsible for this initiative to come here to this chamber and explain what's going on and why, and a number of those things around it, and possibly we could have staff take a look at it too first and just send us a little bit of a preamble before that person comes, in case they decide to decline your invitation, but I'd like to have that invitation made, and if you need a motion, I'd be happy to make it. You have a motion, Madam.
Seconded by Counsel Gillis. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of that motion to invite a speaker to explain what's going on to us? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much. Counsel Case?
Thank you, Madam Warden. My question is through you to Mr. Taylor, and it's regarding the Forest EMS station that's being constructed right now. There was a discussion at one time here in this chamber about the OPP locating in it. There's also been stuff in the media the last little while, there's some confusion within the community, and I guess my question to Mr. Taylor is, do we have a signed agreement with the OPP to locate to that building? That is my question.
Mr. Taylor?
Through you, Madam Warden. So throughout the project, we've actively engaged the OPP, so they're aware of the project and where we are with every step of the way. We do not have any signed formal agreement, but we also don't have any indication that they're not interested in sharing space with us.
Thank you. Follow up, Counsel Case?
Well, yeah, follow up, Madam Warden, back to Mr. Taylor. Again, it's because my memory is not completely clear on this. Was there any compensation involved with that situation with the OPP, perhaps taking up some residents in that EMS station? I'm just a little foggy on that. So that's my question. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Mr. Taylor?
Sure, so when we brought the last report to county council in non-November of last year, prior to the construction phase, the intent was that we share space with the OPP, and we would recover funds against the, for the space that they would occupy in ongoing rent, so absolutely that was set up.
Thank you, Counsel Case. Counsel Gillis?
Thank you, Madam Warden, members of county council. I just wanted to give you an update on the FCM meeting that we had in Oakville on September the 12th to the 16th. And I mentioned before that at that particular meeting, we were going to be talking about pipelines, if you recall, because I was on the task force that we, that framed that question a few months ago. So what has happened, just to give you an overview, there's 100, sorry, 825,000 kilometers of pipeline crisscrossing our country, carrying all sorts of product. The whole point of this task force was to educate the FCM members. 100,000 of those kilometers, sorry, did I say that right? Yes, 100,000 of those kilometers are federal, fall within federal jurisdiction. So with the NEB now being revamped, it's prime time for us to make some adjustments to how we represent ourselves, the FCM municipalities at that level. So what is happening is, from the Pipeline Task Force, it's gone to the Environmental Committee. The Environmental Committee are looking at it right now, and I sit on that as well. And we're looking at how municipalities can have a stronger voice at the National Energy Board approval process, and that's where that is right now. I also wanted to bring forward the fact that I have been working diligently with our MP Marilyn Gladue to address the area grade crossings, particularly this was an issue for dionufemia, and how the infrastructure dollars would affect that, if at all. And I have found out that there is a separate envelope dealing specifically with grade crossings. I wasn't aware of that before, and because of the fact that I'm Vice Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, I am also representing on the Railway Task Force, and we are also looking at it from a national perspective. So I just wanted to give you that heads up, Counsel Broad, that that was front and center at the Infrastructure Committee. The one other thing I wanted to raise to you is the fact that municipalities do bring resolutions, and we do dedicate quite a bit of time to resolutions that have been brought forward, and there's a protocol and a process that is followed on that. And I would suggest that we craft a resolution with regard to invasive species, particularly fragmites. And as I was speaking to Ms. Vedler earlier, British Columbia is dealing with this more diligently perhaps than we are, because they do have issues with cross-border problems in the, in Washington State. So given the fact that we are one of the, what's the word I'm looking for, stewards of the Great Lakes and drinking water for millions and millions of people, this would be a good resolution for us to bring forward on the FCM table. Once it becomes a resolution that is approved by the entire board, then it goes directly to the ministry, and they act on it. So it's something, I think, that we want to be the champions of this and set an example across the country, here's your opportunity. So I will follow through and find out exactly what the protocol is and the processes with regard to how the resolutions are, do get to that level, and then perhaps we can do something on a national level as well.
Thank you, Counsel Gillis. I see Mr. Cole writing away there. Perhaps you could work with him to the end of what the framework of resolutions, et cetera, needs to look like. Back to your comment about the separate envelope of funding for grade crossings. Is there a deadline for funding applications?
I'm not aware of the deadline. I think that there is, it's not a grant per se, there's money that's dedicated to grade crossings. How one accesses that is unclear to me, so that's, and I've asked the members of the board, the staff, to help us work through that to find out, because it's not just our issue, but it's an issue right across the country as well. And it affects particularly rural Canada, particularly the very small communities, so this is something of national interest.
Counsel Bradley?
I have a question for staff and Mr. Taylor. We, a number of months ago, asked the LYNs to come here on a matter of urgency, which is the Detox Withdrawal Management Center, and I recall seeing that that had been delayed because of their own internal issues, but that's, I think, goes back three or four months when we last asked for them to come back to this council, because we're now heading into, I don't know, year six, year seven, year eight, of trying to get this facility that's desperately needed in this community. So are they scheduled to come to county council?
Mr. Taylor?
Through you, Madam Warden. So you're absolutely right. The last committee minutes reflected that we would have the acting CEO, Ralph Ganter, attend and give us an update on the status. Shortly behind that, there was some communication from Blue Water, so you'll recall it was the president, sort of the CAO, Blue Water Hospital, sort of talked a little bit more about the location and where they are, so we didn't feel that Ralph Ganter could provide any more of an update. The last LYN meeting in September, it was supposed to be on that agenda, a report on the same, so you'll recall Blue Water had redone their submission for the project, and the LYN board needed to look at that. That business was not on the LYN agenda, because I was going to attend that evening. I understand the LYN is having their next October meeting in Sarnia, so that agenda is supposed to have the next piece about the project, so there hasn't been any activity from the working group, and, you know, that's, you know, as you said, delay, that's where it is, there's no new information. So if there's a request to have Mr. Ganter formally attend the next council, we can arrange that, if that's the desire of council, but there isn't any other activity on this project that I can report on.
Point we have to do that, because the county, going back a number of years, when Mayor Arnold was the Warden, was the champion on this project. People are dying every day from fentanyl and other drugs, and, you know, there's just a general frustration. The last thing I read was that there was going to be another focus group. Just come up to the emergency ward, or go to the Sarnia Police Station, or any other OPP station, you'll see what the problem is, or the EMS stations. I would move that we invite the head of the LYNs, and who else from Blue Water Health. I just don't know how we get across this sense of urgency to move forward in this. I got a letter from the minister the other day after I wrote to him some time ago, and he said, really, the issues aren't here. Sorry, the issues aren't in Queens Park, for once, the issues are here. The issues are an ability to move this forward. So this county council's been really good at keeping on top of this, and I've had all sorts of exchanges with you on this issue. It's a matter of life and death, so I'm moving that we bring them here as soon as we possibly can, and have a frank discussion about the status of this project.
And if I'm reading you correctly, Counsel Bradley, you're looking for both the LYN and Blue Water Health to present collectively. Okay, that's seconded by Counsel Broad? Okay, that's noted? All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Counsel McGugan?
Madam Warden, members of county council, I think your offices all have received a brochure concerning a tiny town summit on November the 15th. It will be held at the Brook Alvison Inland Community Center. It is sponsored by the municipality of Brook Alvison, the local community group, and OMAFRA. OMAFRA has put in significant dollars to bring some speakers in from far away as Moosejaw. I have not heard this lady, but I understand she is excellent, and there are many more on the agenda, so you are invited. There is a deadline for, to sign up. There is a limit on how many people we can handle. That is November the 15th, which is a Tuesday, runs from 9 till about 3:30 in the afternoon. So I think your offices have the information, and I would strongly suggest that some staff people attend. I believe there's something there for, looking at the agenda for people of that caliber. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McGugan. I know I've signed up to attend that, and that's duly noted for everyone else. Okay. Seeing no other business, I'll turn this back to Mr. Krebs to deal with the notice of bylaws, please.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Warden. There are three bylaws before county council this morning. We do not have movers and seconders for what will, what ought to be a motion that bylaws numbers 25 through 27 is circulated, be taken as read a first and second time, so we'd be looking for a mover and a seconder.
Moved by Counsel Arnold, seconded by Counsel Bradley? You wish to speak? Yes, thank you.
Bylaw 26 of 2016. I see we have, we're eligible for a funding cap for critical infrastructure projects. I wonder if we're going to get a report on what we're going to spend that money on, and also, like, what additional projects are we going to put under that? And then, moving forward, we do have, the provincial government in their infinite wisdom has decided that the formula allocation increases exponentially, which is very good for all of us, of course, at the upper tier and the lower. And I'm just wondering if this will be for additional work, or will it replace part of the county levy as we move forward in the subsequent years? And maybe we could get Jason to put something together for us, for our next committee meeting. I don't need it today, but I'd like to understand where this, because it's quite a lot of money. When you start looking at almost one and a half percent for 2016 top-up being available for this county, there's got to be some significant things we're looking at doing with that as we go forward, and as well, there's quite a substantial amount of money for 18, 17, 18, and 19. So just wondering if we could get a report in regards to that. I'm sure it's forthcoming, but I just wanted to make sure that it was brought up. I'm sure it's forthcoming, but I just wanted to make sure that it was brought up here today. And I just want to thank Jason for putting in the whole application in here for us to look at. I thought it was excellent, and I think that's Jason and probably John that made sure that those things happened for us. And I found it excellent reading, so thank you so much.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Mr. Krebs?
Warden, we'll also be looking for a mover and a seconder for the next motion, which ideally reads that bylaws numbers 25 through 27 of 2016 is circulated, be taken as read a third time and finally passed.
All in favor? Opposed? That's also carried. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn then. Counsel Gillis? Counsel McCharles? All in favor? It's carried. Thank you, counsel. We'll adjourn to our next meeting of Wednesday, November 2nd. Eyes for O'Connell.